Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, December the first, 2020. We welcome you here this evening. And as we normally do, in just a few minutes, we'll get started with a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge allegiance. As we go to that special time, we would all ask you to continue your prayers for our community as we continue to struggle through our current COVID situation and cases are changing every day. And we continue to pray for all those on our front line that are working to make, do the best they can during this special, this terrible time that we are having. But we pray for our hospital workers and our nurses and doctors and all those that are on the front lines trying to help combat this situation and keep our community as safe as it can. So please keep all those people and your thoughts and prayers tonight. Also, we'd like to continue our thoughts and prayers for Warren Harper, our former city fireman here with the city for so many years. Fine gentleman and his family. Warren passed away over the last week or two, and we'd like for you to keep his family in your prayers. And of course, our community leader, Alan Stewart, who passed away also within the last couple of weeks, former alderman at the town of Cages Mountain and also served the city of Lenore in several capacities. And we certainly appreciate Alan and his family for so many years. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers tonight as we go to our time of moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get started tonight, I would like to talk, just mention a couple of things. First, I'd like to say congratulations to some of our tree growers in our area, Mr. Larry Smith and his brother Lynn Smith, Dale Benfield, who are providing 56 Fraser Firs to the nation's capital for the National Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony this year. As you know, years ago, they had the tree that went to the White House, and that was a very special honor. Larry, of course, has the tree lot here in Lenore, and we appreciate them being involved. But congratulations to them again for what they're doing there and for representing North Carolina and our nation's capital in such a wonderful way. You know, tonight is our last meeting of 2020. And since it is, since we will not be meeting another council meeting or a committee, the whole meeting of this month, I would like to just stop for a minute and say thank you to our city council, especially for your leadership, your service to this community, and all that you've done during this very hard time that we are going through. We are now entering the ninth month of this terrible pandemic that we have been battling. And it's been a lot of challenges for not only this council and our staff at the city of Lenore and all the citizens and those in our community. So just want to stop and say thank you to you. Thank you to our city manager, our department heads, and all of our city staff. We have a lot to be thankful for, and we appreciate all the things that all of our people have done during this battle and during this time. And as we come to a time of saying thank you for our year, we want everyone to have a special holiday season. And we know that there's just been tough times to work through, but we appreciate the resiliency and the things that our staff and people have been able to do. I would like to wish our council a very merry Christmas and for all myself and this council to wish all of our city staff, to all of our citizens of Lenore and Caldwell County a very, very special, merry and safe Christmas. And obviously, less hope for a special and a new year, a completely different new year in 2021 that is coming up. I hope, I just want to mention, I hope you're enjoying and will enjoy our beautiful tree, Christmas tree and our light show that's going on downtown for the holidays. Those are some special things that we're able to do. And we appreciate all those who worked so hard to put all those things together for us. And also, we just had a show done by Life in the Carolinas with Carl White. Did the show "Hope Shines Brightly" is our theme, as you know, for this year. And that show is being featured now on that. So I hope you can, you've seen the takes on that, and it showcases our city and community. And we are thankful that hope does shine brightly in the future. So we appreciate all that everyone has done and the hard work that has taken to put these things together. And council, thank you for, we work together well, and let's continue to do the best we can as we move forward in 2021. So thank you. Let me do, call the roll real quickly before we get started with our meeting here tonight. Of course, myself as mayor, Councilmember Jonathan Beal, Councilmember Todd Perdue, Councilmember Ike Perkins, Councilmember David Stevens, and Councilmember Ben Willis are here. City Manager Scott Hildebrand, our Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas, and our Public Information Officer Director Joshua Harris is with us. And also joining us on Zoom tonight, Mayor Pro Tem Christie Thomas is here, I think. Thank you. Councilmember Ralph Presswood.
Here.
Thank you. City Attorney TJ Rohr.
Good evening.
Good evening. Our City Cork Shirley Cannon. And our department head. Okay. And our department head is Donna Bean, our Finance Director.
Here.
Chief Ken Hare, Fire Chief.
I'm here.
Kaywin Horne, our Economic Development Main Street Director.
I'm here.
Police Chief Brent Phelps.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Kenny Storey, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Here.
Ginny Wheelock, our Planning Director.
I'm here.
And certainly, last but not least, the man with the glue that puts everything together, our Public Works Director Jared Wright.
I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So that is our roll call. I hope, I guess we have someone maybe from the news topic that might be joining us on there, so we welcome you as well. So tonight, our first order of business is a special recognition. And on behalf of the city council, we'll recognize Mr. Donald Hall, our Laurel Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator Three, upon his 41 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the city of Lenore and its citizens. Mr. Hall is not with us this evening, but could not be here, but we will ask Radford Thomas, the Public Utilities Director, to come up and join me for, and we will read the proclamation for honoring Mr. Hall and hope you will pass this on to him with our sincere thanks for great service to our community. Whereas Donald Hall began his career as a wastewater treatment plant operator one, August 1st, 1980, obtained additional certification on July the 7th, 1987, to wastewater treatment plant operator two, and further certification on August 14th, 2000, to wastewater treatment plant operator three. And whereas Donald Hall has announced his retirement effective January 1st, 2021, ending 41 years of exemplary service to the citizens of Lenore and Caldwell County. And whereas Donald has made a significant contribution through his operational experience and knowledge of the wastewater treatment plants, along with his integrity and commitment to excellence in providing a safe and clean environment to our community. And whereas his Team Lenore approach in the utilities department and the respect for his expertise is shared by all of his coworkers, that was experience, excuse me, I missed the wrong word. Now, therefore, being resolved that I as mayor and on behalf of Lenore City Council and all the citizens do hereby wish the very best for Donald in his retirement and commend him for the example he has set as a dedicated public servant. Being further resolved, that we extend our sincere appreciation and deep gratitude for his faithful and outstanding service, which has contributed to the betterment of our city. This is the first day of December, 2020. Radford? I will pass that to you to forgive him. And we also have for him a presentation for his service to our city, a key to our city of Lenore, key that he has, and for our city that he has made so much better in what he has done in his 41 years. This is presented to Donald Hall, Laurel Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, in recognition of 41 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the citizens of the city of Lenore and its citizens. Radford? And at the end, if anything you'd like to say?
I sure will.
Yep. If you'd like to say anything in his behalf, tell him we were sorry we missed it tonight.
I will start off by saying this is another example of the longevity that we have experienced in the utilities department. Forty-one years from Donald, I could name a half a dozen off the top of my head that are 35, approaching 40-year-plus employees in our department. So I've been very blessed, but it's also been a challenge. There's some planning that has to go along with when these folks can retire. But I'm really thankful for folks like Donald, the leadership that they provide, just their steady hand, the consistency of their work, their dependability, you know, being there when they're supposed to be there, all of those good things have really, you know, made our department a very solid organization. Donald sends his regrets for not being able to attend this evening, but he also extends his thanks and his appreciation for all the things that the city has done for him over that 41 years. The opportunity to work here, have a nice, steady, dependable job, and an opportunity to grow, you know, as you can see from the resolution, he's worked his way up through the years. And I appreciate him, appreciate what all my folks do, but he does, he does send his thanks and his appreciation for being recognized, and I'll make sure that he gets it.
Thank you very much. Please pass on our dear congratulations to him for hard work and many years of service. Thank you for that. Next on our agenda, we are not going to have a presentation tonight from the Services for the Blind nonprofit organization to the council. They will be joining us at a later time on that.
Actually, actually, Mr. Mayor, they're meeting with Public Works Director Jared Wright and our Risk Coordinator David Coffey on Thursday to go through their issues.
Okay.
So that's probably a more appropriate area for them to go and meet with first, so.
Well, that will be good. We know there's some things that we are obviously looking into and know that Jared and David and others are looking into how we can make improvements to that to help that situation. So thank you for that. We'll move on. We do not have matter scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda items, which consist of the minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, and a lease agreement with Bernhardt Transportation LLC. This would be approval of a resolution authorizing the lease of city property for a term of one year to the Bernhardt Transportation LLC. Note, the resolution and supporting documentation for this item will be sent out on Monday, November the 30th. So those are two items that are on our consent agenda. If there's any one you'd like to discuss, if not, I will ask for a motion for those.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A and B.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to accept the consent agenda items, items A and B as presented. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on the phone.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We appreciate that. So we'll move on then to any requests and petitions of any citizens on our agenda. There's certainly no one with us tonight here in the hall. If there's anyone on the phone that has any discussion or questions of anything, we'll be open for that. Don't think so, not hearing anything, thank you on that. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, cup atmosphere information this evening. The annual luminary display at Blue Ridge Memorial Park will be held on Friday, December 11th, beginning at 6:00 PM going to 10:00 PM. The rain date for that event is Friday, December 18th. Also, city offices will be closed on Thursday, December 24th, Friday, December 25th, and Monday, December 28th in observance of the Christmas holidays. Also, the city office will be closed on Friday, January 1st in observance of New Year's Day. Our fall leaf collection is underway. I think this week we'll finish our first round through the city. We plan to do two more rounds, one in December and one in January. Appreciate Jared's crew working on that with the weather we've had and a lot of rain. It's been difficult to get the leaves up, but they're making progress. And he may comment on that in a little bit. But also, our curbside Christmas tree pickup, we're just putting them out, but we'll be picking those trees up on Monday, January 4th, and that ends on Friday, January 8th. So that week we'll be collecting Christmas trees once the holiday season concludes. Tonight, we only have one item for council action. We have a bid award for the old Royal Hill Furniture Site, which is the corner of Virginia Street and College Avenue. As you recall, back in, I think, 2014, the city acquired that property in a tax foreclosure or started that process, but acquired that property based on back taxes. And since that time, we've been working to try to go back and find funds to clean that property up. As you know, it's got a lot of debris left on that site. Radford Thomas has coordinated that project from the get-go, trying to get that. We applied for some grants back in 2014, 15, didn't get those, but in 2018, 19, we received $300,000 from Appalachian Regional Commission to go back and begin the cleanup. So tonight, you have before you a bid award, and Radford, if you want to come up to the podium to go through this, but they, working with the Western Piedmont Council of Government who helped coordinate the grant, Radford's been working to put RFP out for proposals and bids to go back, clean that site up, and I'll let him review that. Also tonight, we have Greg Eisenhour with Mid-Atlantic Associates on the call, and also Radford has Jared Wright, our Public Works Director, on the call as well to go back and add comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We received four sealed bids on this for certain, you know, for the purposes of the service agreement, clean this property up. The bids were from RCI Demolition in Charlotte, Stat Incorporated here in Lenore, DH Griffin in Hickory, and Clearsite Industrial from Charlotte, North Carolina. Clearsite presented a letter of no bid, so that we still had four bids to meet any requirements necessary to be able to open the proposals. The numbers presented to us were pretty widespread, and I think that's provided in the information with the council action form. But in order to try to, everybody's proposal was a little different in trying to approach this project and to meet the scope of the work program that Greg Eisenhour put together for us, so we'd have some idea, you know, to, something to present to the prospective bidder so they would understand exactly what, you know, everything that could be involved. So Greg, if you want to speak a minute to the work program, that'd be fine.
When we started the project, if you recall back a number of years ago, EPA expended some of their funds through their targeted assistance to brownfields for some initial assessment on the site. And that's kind of what got this started. Because of the debris on site, they weren't able to complete that assessment, so that part of the project stalled. So the work plan that we put together, based on the work that Tetra Tech had done for EPA, they had identified some hazardous material that were left on site as part of the former buildings. And primarily, there were several areas of asbestos floor tiles that were left in place. Since this is a proposed brownfield site, we had to engage Division of Environmental Quality to prepare a work plan so that the work that was done there relative to removal of this debris ultimately met with their approval, you know, vis-à-vis the brownfield process. So we put together a work plan. The work plan was basically at the time to remove the debris, leave as asbestos tiles or asbestos flooring in place. And we came up with an approach, DEQ approved it, and that's the work plan that you see attached to your packet.
Thank you, Greg. So taking into consideration the requirements in the work program and just trying to understand how to get this to an apples-to-apples comparison between these companies, Jared was a big help, and he can speak to his approach to this. But kind of at the same time, we kind of backed into, or I did, he knew where he was going with this. I kind of backed into it. But we tried to figure out a way to get this down to a removal of this material on a per ton basis. They all estimated a volume, you know, so many cubic yards, and they presented a price for what they thought they could remove that number of, or tons of material. Some did look, they all did it based on tons, but they also assumed some cubic yards of material. So in doing that, we were able to kind of do an analysis on it that got us to a per ton price. And I'm trying to remember where Jared put together a little spreadsheet that's in your packet. And in working at it this way, the three bidders that we had, RCI was $91.18 per ton based on 6,000 tons of material. STAT was $124.58 per ton based on their quantity of 1,200 tons. And then DH Griffin was $129 a ton based on, you know, the quantity that they were considering. So they were the higher of the three that were remaining. And it left us with RCI. And then, you know, looking at the completeness of their proposal, they were $91.18 a ton, but their proposal was really the most complete. It addressed all of the debris, the asbestos and non-asbestos, and was the most responsive to our request. They have experience with a recent project identical to this one in North Carolina, and they're working with Mid-Atlantic Associates on this project, and that's in Pineville, North Carolina. Their disposal plan reduces the risk and exposure to the city. If some of this material were inadvertently disposed of, the asbestos-containing material in a non-ACM-approved landfill, it could present some exposure to the city that wouldn't necessitate us remediating a contaminated landfill cell. So their proposal also removes the asbestos-containing material from the site, reducing the necessity for an additional project in the future just to handle that material. It's a more complete approach. You know, they had the lowest overall disposal cost per ton. And it was kind of interesting that a prior estimate that was done by the environmental review that Tetra Tech did back in 2014 timeframe, their estimated cost was, and the material on site was more in line with that estimate that was done then than the other two proposals. So we think that they're, and feel that they're the most responsive. And Jared, give you an opportunity to kind of speak to what some of our discussion.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is give Radford a lot of credit in following up with these bidders and asking questions that needed to be asked. The first thing, when you open bids with this much disparity between the numbers, you know, red flags go off, and you want to know if contractors are looking at the same scope of work. And what Radford was able to determine was that, you know, contractors use their own methods to estimate quantities. So as he said, we had to find that common ground and make this an apples-to-apples bid. And arriving at a per-ton cost for completely removal and disposal was our method of doing that, which you can see in the spreadsheet that's included in the packet tonight. And after, you know, Radford following up with contractors and us doing some serious number crunching, we're very confident in RCI and their approach to providing a service that meets the entire scope with the most competitive number.
Any questions of Radford, Jared, or Greg? Greg, welcome. Glad to have you with us this evening. Thank you for being a part of the meeting.
Well, thank you for having me.
Radford, I have a quick question.
Okay.
So is there a contingency plan if, so they start digging and they go down, I'm just making up a number, five feet, and then they're like, oh, no, we need to go down another foot? So now, instead of doing 6,000 tons, now it's 7,000 tons. What does that look like?
That's a really good question. They estimated the depth of some of those piles. We're not asking them to go below grade level, ground level. We're not, we're not asking them to dig down and remove soil. It's taking the debris off the top of the soil and off the top of the concrete. We've asked that question. If they get to 6,000 tons and there's still debris left out there, we can negotiate with them, hopefully at that same per-ton price, find some money and let them keep working. If it comes in at 4,500 tons.
This will be my next question.
Then it reduces what we would be paying them by 91.18 times 1,500 tons.
Okay.
So it would save us a few dollars. That's kind of a round way of looking at it. The cost, the disposal cost is actually $45 per ton, so it would really be more like $45 times 1,500, or 45 times the additional thousand. So, you know, we have a way of working with this to either get to a point and stop and then, you know, figure out what Plan B is to keep going, or they get rid of all of it and it wasn't as much as they estimated, and it saves us a few dollars.
Well, you can see, I think, I think the approach is spot on because of what, everything that you and Jared said.
I couldn't have done this without Jared. His experience, and Greg also, but Jared's experience with McGill, I mean, this is what he did, is he really analyzed these projects, and he was a big help, and I appreciate the, kind of a team effort on that.
You can tell when there's 1,200 and 6,000 and 10,000, you know, it's like there's shots in the dark, but I think, I think it's good, so.
I mean, we walked over the top of it. They even, one of them even used a drone and flew over the top and used that to help them estimate what they needed to do, so.
So hopefully, they're going to be.
Yeah.
Close to the ballpark of what we hope.
Yeah.
I mean, they've done this before, obviously. I know it's hard to bid something like this, but they are bidding it based on that, so.
It's kind of a job that gives bond companies fits.
Yeah.
You don't have much disparity on the bid.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what made it tough. You know, if they were within 10% or 15% of each other, it makes it a little easier to see that, you know, everybody was on the same track, but we were, we were kind of way out there. You know, they are using an approved landfill, you know, that's key to this. And to give you some idea of how they'll have to dispose of it, it'll be loaded into a large dump bed that's lined with polyethylene, basically. They fold it over the top, seal it up, and when they dump it, it comes out of the back of the truck, all in one big sealed container, and that's what gets buried in that landfill. So it, you know, it helps keep it from leaching out, getting airborne. That's the big problem with anything with asbestos, is it becoming airborne as much as anything, so.
Yeah. That's, it's going to be a great project. That's a valuable piece of property that could be used to recruit.
It's all headed in the right direction if we can get this up and running.
Yeah.
And once this is completed, then Greg's group will come in and do the brownfield.
Yep. Yeah, they'll, they'll do a more complete Phase Two, environmental on it, and that puts us in the position to take the next step, working with the state to actually get the brownfield agreement. brownfield agreement in place.
Yep.
That's key. The, the agreement is the big, big key to this for future development.
Okay. Any other questions of these gentlemen concerning this? Thank you for your, your work. I know it's been, it's not something that's easy to, to put together, but we appreciate your work on getting it to this point in time, so.
Eat an ounce of one bite at a time.
Yeah.
I use that analogy when I was in East Timor, and nobody got it. The translator, I think, got left behind on that one.
All right, so you're making this, sending this as a recommendation for, for consideration to this bid award. This is for the old Broad Hill Furniture site. Low bid is submitted by RCI Demolition of Charlotte, North Carolina, in an amount of And this is a recommendation from STAT.
And, and this is a, this is a tentative award? You know, we'll, we'll have to get our agreement with them in, with, with their proposal, we'll have to agree to that, and we also have a service contract that, kind of a standard contract that Jared has put together. And we changed a few things around, but we'll have them under a service contract with us to go along with their proposal.
Okay. Is this part of the motion, I would say then? Okay. All right, then we'll give it to council for any other discussion and/or motion concerning this bid award.
I make a motion, we approve the bid award as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from council member Willis to accept the bid award as presented, and I assume the other things that would go, go with that, and we'll look into it. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. All opposed? I think that's everybody. Stands unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, Greg, for being with us.
Thank you, Greg.
Jared, for your work on this as well. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you much.
All right. Do we have any report from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr, tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anything other than to say that I look forward to working with everyone in 2021 and hope that we will do everything we can to, to find ways to work together. That's what I think our nation needs to, to look at as a whole. So I hope that we can, we can do that. We do that. I really do feel that way, and I hope that maybe we'll rub off on some others in, in the government. Yes, sir, Mr. Hildebrand.
He didn't let me go back and finish, but I was going to wish everyone a healthy, happy, and safe holiday season and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Anything from our, any of our council members?
Just while you guys are out there, being safe and sound to go out there, make sure you support your local small businesses out there. They really need us more than ever, so if you can, it goes, it really means a lot to these guys. Come downtown, come, just, just do that. And your, your, they're not, just mind, all the nonprofits out there too also need support and some love out there too.
I was sort of saying, today is Giving Tuesday. I know we're almost past Giving Tuesday, but that doesn't mean you have to stop on Tuesday.
Oh, the run. Yes. Oh, my wife has got, United Way of Caldwell County is doing virtual, Scott, you know more about these more than I do. She tells me about it, but it's a virtual 5K. So go to CaldwellUnitedWay.com or .org to go and check out that. So she's trying to get a, a few more things. So fun ways to stay in shape. I know, Mayor, you are a big runner, big walker. This might be good for you.
Can't, can't wait to get in that one.
Yeah, work off that turkey.
I would like to add, I would encourage everybody here and everybody listening and everybody that might catch this streaming at some point in time, contact your representatives in Washington, our congressman, our two U.S. senators, and ask them to please get off the pot and provide some assistance back to these communities that need it with COVID help.
Yeah, that's right.
Very good point.
Good science today.
Very true. And I hope that in the near future, when we get past the holidays, we can reach out to our legislators and invite them to our community and sit down and have some conversation with them about what we have going on and what others have going on, and as we move forward in, in looking for the, for the future on that. Council, any other council members?
Yes.
Anything? Okay. We'll ask our department heads if you have anything that you'd like to bring up before we adjourn tonight's meeting, anything you'd like to discuss. Thank you for, again, for all that you're doing. Please be safe out there. I know you're doing everything you can to do that, but if there's anything you'd like to bring up, I appreciate all the work that you're doing right now. Everybody's quiet.
I'll say, have a Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, Joshua. Well, Merry Christmas to everyone, and please be safe over the holidays and enjoy your family and all the things that you can. And as we, unless something else comes before us, we stand adjourned.